Okay, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. This is the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, September 1st, 2021. Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is seven o'clock. We're broadcast live on channel, local channel 18, streamed live on the town of Mashpee website, I'd ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. Through the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from August 18th, 2021. Everyone's read the minutes. Any thoughts, comments, suggestions, edits?
Do not.
Having none, I would...
We accept the minutes as written.
Thank you, Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:10. So let's go to... How about committee reports? Cape Cod Commission?
I have no report.
Community Preservation?
I have no report.
Design Review?
I will continue the no report.
Wow. Plan Review?
No meeting.
Environmental Oversight?
We did have a meeting. Oh, did we already... Sorry, I've been out with a baby, so we did have a meeting. I guess it was probably the day before I went out, so we reviewed the Building G of the South Cape Village modification. It was recommended for approval to the board with conditions. Generally, those conditions were code compliance related, particularly from the fire department. I have not seen an updated plan set pursuant to those recommendations, so we would be looking for those as the public hearing were to open. And Jack could probably elaborate on what those conditions were.
No, it's the exact same thing.
Great, thank you. Environmental Oversight, we did not have a meeting. Historic District Commission?
We have a meeting coming up September 13th.
It was a moving target, Dennis, so I think you're right. I'd have to double check with you.
Finally settled.
Yeah, it took a while to get forum.
Okay.
So after that, we'll have a report.
Got it, thank you. And Military Civilian Advisory Council?
No meeting.
No meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out that in your packet, there's a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B in Sandwich. 33 Water Street in Sandwich, Mass. Isn't that the old...
The Henry T. Wing School.
Wing School?
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, they're gonna convert that to 128 rental units. 108 will be affordable.
Nice.
62-plus.
Yeah, it's a senior housing, right?
Senior housing. And so it has 120... Sorry, 108 affordable units and 20 market rate.
Great.
For the record, I'm a proud eighth-grade graduate of the Henry T. Wing School.
Oh, really?
Oh, good for you.
You never know, you might retire there.
Maybe you can live there one day.
That's right, we'll save you a room. Anything else in the correspondence, Evan, that we should, while we're trying to get to 7:10?
Nothing that immediately stuck out to me, so thanks to Mary for mentioning the Ford and Sandwich.
All right. We could start the conversation on new business. The discussion regarding procuring consultants to review the CAC technical analyses?
Yeah.
Might as well. And if we have to stop at 7:10, we could back up.
I'd like one for a traffic study. I read this thing that you gave me two weeks ago, and there's a few things I'd like to go over, but it could take a while. One of the things, they wanted to do this in phases, but they want a 25-year permit. No way, if they want a 25-year permit, I want to study for the whole project, a traffic study, not the one that they gave us. And when they gave us that, I said, "This is an old study. Is this gonna be used?" And I was kind of told, "No, no, they have to give us something." But I read here, maybe I'm wrong, that's the one they want to go by. They're not counting the new phase of the new project. And then another thing, they're going by the per... I asked about the permits. They have like, I think, I know they have one out. I think they have two permits out. I asked if they're gonna rescind them, and they didn't really answer me, but they're using that permit for the first half of this study. So I don't understand. We're looking at a project, they want 25 years, but they want to break it down into phases. And then they don't know how to do a traffic study for phase, each phase. So all of a sudden, we're gonna say, gee, we have too many cars, and they're on the third phase, then they're gonna go with me.
I...
And then I want to know the right numbers. They have numbers here, like 15, 135 square feet of commercial space, and that's already built. But I want to see them do the 1,700 that they said they were gonna do. And then I like when they say, "Oh, the Cape Cod Commission thinks this is a reasonable way to go." The Cape Cod Commission don't live here, it's Mashpee. Let us be the reason, this is the way the study should go, not the Cape Cod Commission. And if you read it, they're already agreeing with, gee, we gotta look at if we really need another study for the traffic, and then...
Dennis, use your mic so people at home can hear you.
Oh, okay, oh. What's it about the development agreement? Have we signed it? I haven't seen the development agreement, because they talk about that a lot, like, "Oh, the development agreement says we can look at other phases if we think we need more studies." The Cape Cod Commission, it's their opinion. So if they say the planning board wants another study, and the Cape Cod Commission's the one that says if we need another study or not? No way. That's what I get from this. The Cape Cod Commission controls this whole thing. And when I look at this now, the Cape Cod Commission, I don't know if this is gonna be right, but they're in the back park with the Carmans. For the last four years, they've been working with the Carmans. First, they wanted to do their farm-based zoning, and that didn't fly. Then they come back with this. So they've been working on this for like, these four years. And then the guy that was a charge of Cape Cod Commission is their consultant now. So I don't... It seems like the Cape Cod Commission has more control than the people on this planning board and all the people out here. That's what the Cape Cod Commission thinks, that if we need another study, it's up to them, not up to the town and planning.
This is a three-party agreement, equal. We have our own safe town, they can't just make their own decision for us.
Yeah, but there's these rules you gotta go by. If you read this, it's their opinion and stuff, and they're the ones that have control, not... That may be true, but the way I'm just looking at this with...
Joe, did they ask us our opinion about the traffic study scope of work?
No, they're saying this is done here.
No. So we're not in equal footing.
Go along with what they're saying.
No, but yeah.
Right, right.
It seems like this is it, even if we disagree. I don't know. But I don't want no 25-year agreement if we're gonna do this in phases. I want a whole study of everything this project is. It could be traffic, you know, a bunch of studies that we probably really need, like, you know, I'm getting... This has been bothering me for two weeks, reading this. I don't like the way it was written, you know? And the numbers they use, they're not right. And they say, "Oh, we can go back to the..." They do say about the development, the cottages in Southport, having that much more people on it, but I don't think they put that in the study. And I wanted, in the intersections, I want more. They got 15, they should do a little more. It says we can ask for that, but you gotta ask through the Cape Cod Commission. All right, I've said enough. I don't like this, and I'm not gonna vote on this. And I'm not gonna vote for a 25-year. And it's gotta be the special permit for me, if they want to do this in phases. All right, let's go on with the public hearing. I mean, if anybody wants to hear... Evan, how come that study, that traffic study, was used for this report? When I asked you about that, you said, "Oh, they have to just give something that's not necessary." I know it says we can go back and look at it, but...
What you're referring to, that document, is the scoping memorandum that is provided to the Cape Cod Commission prior to, or in conjunction with, the application for a development agreement. It's the same thing they would do for a DRI. The applicant says, "Cape Cod Commission, as you review this project, we propose this scope of work, as you will require a traffic study from us to render a decision relative to the proposed project."
But on each phase?
So there's, this document is saying, "Here's what we think is an adequate scope of work." The response you're referring to is the Cape Cod Commission's answer to that scoping memorandum, to which they generally agreed with the approach. What we... Because, you know, the statement you made in the past couple minutes was that the board, as the lead community, essentially as a member of the negotiating party, if you will, has no influence over the traffic impact and traffic studies report, which I would assert is not necessarily factual. The town has an opportunity, and which is why we're approaching the development agreement over a long period of time, to assess traffic interventions as the project gets built out. So I think what you want is a traffic study for...
That's not count... Excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So what you're interested in seeking, Dennis, is a traffic study for the entire scope of the entire proposal, which really is not, it's not possible. But we can create a framework for the study, whereas as the phases get built out, the town, by way of the development agreement and a condition of the development agreement, could require additional study.
My problem is, is if...
Let Dennis...
No, I wanna talk, I haven't had a turn. I'm sorry.
Mary, Dennis is, let Dennis finish.
It's like pulling the will over my eyes. We're gonna show you this piece, but they know how many buildings are gonna build there. They gave us that number. Do the build-out for that. It's like, oh, we'll give you a little piece, so you don't see the rest, and you're not gonna realize how big this project is gonna really be.
If they want approval for more than what they're gonna study, they're not gonna get it.
Yeah.
So if they are proposing a project, and they want us to approve it, but they don't want the study to have that same scope, they're just not gonna get that.
Well, I think what they're suggesting, Evan, correct me if I'm wrong, is in the development agreement, we would have stipulations that as phases progress, we would have another traffic study. We would have another traffic study.
I think those are parameters to be defined by way of the negotiation, so I don't think it's an end-all.
You're right, John. John, you're right. That's exactly what they're asking.
That's what they're asking, yeah.
That's what they're asking.
Right.
And the problem is, is after five phases, you figure out you need a four-lane road for Route 28. You've already approved it 25 years ago. And how do... So you need to do the study for, the traffic study for the whole thing, so you can determine if Route 28 is gonna have to be four lanes, because then the town meeting can decide, yes, we want four lanes on Route 28, or we don't. It's very dangerous to proceed here without the full scope.
Go ahead, Jack.
All right, we gotta get the public hearing.
Yeah, let's go to the public hearing, and then we'll come back to this. Public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9, the Mashpee Planning Board will open a public hearing on Wednesday, September 1st, 2021, at 7:10. I apologize, we're a little late. In the Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, first floor, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649, to consider an application requesting a special permit modification made by DPF Mashpee LLC to construct a commercial building identified as Building G and the approved special permit plans to be used for retail sales in the development identified as South Cape Village Shopping Center located between Route 28, Donna's Lane, and Great Neck Road South. The planning board approved the South Cape Village Shopping Center as 160,000-square-foot commercial center on May 2nd, 2020, 2001, and the special permit decision has been modified from time to time over the past 20 years, and has included and shown the future location of Building G being contemplated in this request for a special permit modification. We have received a letter from the attorney on behalf of DPF Mashpee LLC. The applicant in the above- referenced modification of special permit application, I am writing to request that the public hearing currently scheduled for September 1st, 2021, be continued without testimony to the September 14, 2021, planning board hearing agenda. Do I have a motion to continue the discussion until...
The only concern is, is that's a Tuesday. I'm wondering if we should put it to the next meeting, which is a Wednesday. I'm afraid that people are gonna miss the meeting, because we, you know, there's a special case that we're meeting on Tuesday.
I know, we're gonna give them two weeks' notice. I don't, I don't have a preference either.
Is that our next meeting day?
It's a Tuesday.
The 15th is Yom Kippur. There are no meetings on that date.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem meeting on Tuesday.
No, we've already, we've agreed we're gonna meet on Tuesday.
Yeah, we agree for that meeting, because of the holiday.
And we're gonna be here, so...
Yeah.
Why, you think that meeting's gonna be long?
I think there's a lot of public interest, and we usually meet on Wednesdays. I just don't want to cause any confusion. That's all.
There's one public hearing scheduled for that date already, so if it's to be the 14th, there's a public hearing scheduled at 7:10.
Right, and that's an automatic referral to the Cape Cod Commission. So that's not gonna...
That's quick. So I think we should schedule the program for the 14th.
At 7:20?
7:20.
Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
Just to continue the discussion, and I heard what Mary and Dennis said about getting a study on the whole scope. My feeling, though, is we're a little bit of ahead of ourselves here, because even just reading this thing from Evan, which he'll share with us later, we haven't made any determination on the scope of this project. We may decide through the negotiations, through this three-party agreement, that we don't want that full scope, 1,700. We may decide there's certain areas we don't want developed. So do a traffic study on something that we haven't even defined the parameters of yet may be a little bit premature. I'm fully for doing a study based on, once we get to that defined type.
But you can't, that's not gonna be, that could not be a definitive decision, because let's say you say, okay, we want X amount of housing units, and then you do the traffic study and realize that's too much traffic for us. You have to be able to change that housing number.
I totally agree with you. But also, just to reinforce, I don't understand what you have the problem with repeated studies for different phases, because if you do a study for this next phase that's upcoming, and you find out that based on the other things that are going around in town, that it can't support, this next phase cannot support what they propose to do, then there's gotta be certain criteria in the development agreement that addresses that. It just, it doesn't say you're gonna do a study for Phase 5, and regardless of the outcome, nothing's gonna happen. If the outcome says we can't support the traffic, Dennis, then guess what? Phase 5 won't look like Phase 5 from 20 years ago.
But it has a zoning bylaw change in it, and you can't undo that.
Yeah, but then what's the purpose of redoing the studies?
You have to, I don't want to redo it. I want to do it right at the beginning. I don't want to redo it.
But let's say another development, say something changes over at South Cape. Say some other things come up that are not associated with the Carmans. So it, or even for that matter, they do things in East Falmouth. They changed the traffic patents coming down Route 28, all 151 in Falmouth. And we're doing, I think it's prudent to do additional studies on the traffic as this progresses down the road, because if we find additional problems, then we can address it. And if we incorporate that into the development agreement, then we have something to point that, or something to go with. If we say we're just gonna do one major study for a proposal that's not even defined yet, we haven't even defined the scope of this yet. We haven't, what they've given to us, which is very, very preliminary, we don't all agree with. I know we don't. I know that we see issues with Trout Pond, we see issues over the Mashpee River, and I think there's gonna be modifications, which is gonna reduce the size of this, which is gonna change the scope of the traffic study. So if we do a traffic study based on the big picture, when we shouldn't be, we should be doing the traffic study on what we're actually gonna do, that makes more sense to me.
Then that, this is like chicken and the egg.
Right, we're ahead of ourselves, I think.
But, yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying, though?
I do, it makes sense, but we're giving them a permit for 117 houses and so much commercial space. Once they get that permit, all the traffic studies we see, they're gonna say, "I got my permit, you're not gonna change it."
Well, not if it's, not if it's in the development agreement, though, Dennis. That's the purpose of a development agreement. A development agreement is binding. So if you have include, the things in the development agreement...
Binding, what they're gonna give us is 1,700 houses and...
You don't know what to ask.
We haven't even gotten there yet, that's what I mean. We haven't gotten there yet.
I've never seen a proposal, ever.
This has never happened, ever. This is the first time.
Proposals this size happen...
This is not a DRI, this is a CAC.
All the time, okay? And we have professional staff that deal with development agreements, whether they're two-party or 50-party, okay? This is not gonna shake the world, because it's three-party, okay? And it doesn't, it doesn't merit special treatment, because there's three parties, okay? So I've never seen a project that would be asking for this much, but study the impacts of this much. That's my point.
You're missing my point. You're completely missing my point. They're asking for this much, but we're not giving them this much. What if we're only giving them this much? So why are we studying this much?
Because you might say, "This much is good," right?
Mm-hmm.
And they're only studying this much, and you won't know the impact of that much. And it might reduce what you want to provide and allow based on the study of the entire project.
But that's my point. We haven't defined what the entire... Just hear me out for a second. We haven't defined what the entire project is. Once we define what the entire project is, whether it were B, I don't think it's gonna be 1,700, but once we define it, I have no problem with, let me just finish. I have no problem with defining or having a traffic study on that whole project, but I also, I want to have studies that continue beyond the original study to make sure that we have safeguards in place.
It's not for us to propose...
It's for our kids.
No, 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 it's not for us. The applicant is responsible to bring this to us, and for what they are asking for, to provide studies that show us the impacts. Not us to say, "Well, we're only gonna give you 50%, so a study only on 50% is okay." If they want to come in and give me something that's not this big, but this big, and do an impact study on something that big, fine. But if they're, if they still have this project of the size that they've already proposed, they're gonna damn well do studies for that project size.
We haven't met with them to decide that yet.
They haven't amended anything, but they're going forward with the Cape Cod Commission with something smaller. Now...
See, I didn't read that in there like that.
Oh, gosh, this is, this is much smaller than anything they have proposed to us, and they just presented to us two meetings ago. It wasn't even near what this is. This is so small compared to that. And, and the Cape Cod Commission is not treating us as a, as a full third party. They're having conversations without us. And I think that the reason why I agreed with Dennis, and I'm so glad the chair put on this agenda, was how to procure these consultants, because I think we need a traffic consultant right away. And I, we have our chief procurement officer in the room, Rodney is here tonight, and I think he needs to give us some guidance about how to procure somebody and get somebody working on this traffic issue now, right now.
Go ahead, Evan.
The only thing I want to say is that you keep talking about like, a hole, one hole, and then you're referencing a traffic study as a singular piece, but I don't think that the proposal, or that scoping memorandum that we're referring to, is saying, "We're only going to study this piece, and it's gonna be over." I think they're saying, "We have a hole, and initially, we're gonna study this piece, and we're gonna define a framework to study each individual segment of that piece." So it's going to be a hole. I think it's a bit of a misinterpretation to say it's only gonna be segmented like that.
Yeah, you're saying they're not gonna be going by phases, they're gonna do it all together.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what's proposed.
I'd like to have that clarified, and I'd like to have a neutral, unopinionated consultant on our side. And I think we should do that now.
But that's like what Evan just said, I said before, it's like they're piecemeal on us with this project. We're gonna show you this and keep this behind the back. And if this gets built, oh, nobody's saying it, here's Phase 2, and then when we're in Phase 3, people are gonna go, "What do we do?" You're gonna, they're presenting it as a whole project with 25-year special permit. I want the study right now going along with the project.
I think it would be good to have it impartial, but...
Definitely, oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, but again, we don't know what we're gonna do yet, so we're gonna start, you know, retaining some of the payment whatever we're doing.
I, myself personally, and I don't know anybody else on the board, I'm one member, I think we need a traffic consultant to actually see if this study is what they want to build is, is right. And we got a new grocery store going in. That's probably 300 cars a day right there, and that's right on the Carmans. Oh, another thing on that study, they said, "We want this to be a walk-in and a bicycle thing, so people can get sharpened." You come November, I live in a thing, it's snowing out, I'm gonna take my bike or walk, I'm gonna get in my car. That's good for three months, that walk-in, not even for three months, because if you live up behind the church, you're gonna get in your car to go to Stop and Shop, or Roach Brothers, or Falmouth, or Hyannis. You're not, you're not, you're not gonna go walk around the Carmans every day if you're living there. You may go to a restaurant once a week, once a month, I don't know, but there's other restaurants you may like that's not in the Carmans, so you're gonna get in your car. So I don't like that bicycle and walkways, there's gonna be a walker community. That's all right when you live in Somerville, and they build like, 1,000, 2,000 houses, and they have stores and restaurants right there, and a food store, you can walk right there, and they have a train station, so if you're going to work, you don't have to take your car. But here, if, I don't know, okay, I've said enough about the bicycle, but that was another thing I read on this.
Anybody else?
Can I just ask a question? I know under the special permit, we have the authority to hire a consultant, us.
Yeah.
And obviously, this is not a special permit, and I do not, I'm not aware of the Cape Cod Commission's regulations, but I'm just gonna ask it out there. Can we find out if it's, the responsibility of the cost associated with the consultant is borne upon the applicant, or is it borne upon the town?
Yeah.
It's the applicant, I believe.
Yeah, well, our zoning specifically defines the ability for the board, also in the special permit regulations, to require the applicant pay for an additional consultant. The development agreement zoning bylaw is kind of silent on the issue, and I haven't seen anything in the development agreement regulations that would mandate the applicant, but I would need clarity. I don't have a definitive answer tonight.
Because I couldn't find it in ours.
Mr. Chairman, we have the chief procurement officer in the room, the town manager. Can we hear from him on that matter, please?
On who, who pays for the study?
Yeah, what are our resources in the town to pay for the study?
Sure. Mr. Town Manager? Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have said publicly before the Board of Selectmen, and I'll say in front of the Planning Board, the town does have a line item for legal, engineering, consulting, and there's generally a turnback each and every year, and the reason is because we cannot always plan for the unanticipated. This would be one of those situations that would be unanticipated. I need two things. I need either a vote from the Planning Board or the Board of Selectmen to suggest that a consultant be hired, and then the second part to that would be, what is the scope? Is it traffic that you want to study? Is it the environmental impact that you want to study? Whatever it may be, and it may be more than that. It may be less than that. Uh, but whatever it is, uh, the town does have the funds that would be available for that purpose. I would defer to the planner in terms of whether or not the applicant may be responsible. I don't know what your procedures have been in the past, however, I do think in order for it to be credible and validated for the protection of the town's interests, it certainly should be a study that, uh, the scope is selected by the town. And the person who is doing the work is retained for the purpose of the town's interests and nobody else's interest.
Right.
Uh, if that is the focus and the mission, then the findings, uh, whether it be the board or the, I should say, the Planning Board or the other board. Uh, it would certainly go a long ways towards, uh, determining whether or not, uh, it carries the weight that it actually should. So that, uh, it's considered impartial, objective, and thorough and competent, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead Joe.
To the town manager's point and yours Evan, if we can find, I don't know, but if we can find a way to get a third-party impartial, uh, done with the commons paying for it, not taking it out of town's pocket, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Um, is that, we could, I guess, see if that's first a possibility, that's would be good for everybody. As long as we can find a third-party impartial that will work on, you know, in our benefit, the town.
Uh, if we make it a special permit, we can do that.
But it wouldn't happen prior to the adoption of any agreement.
Right, you have to, you have to tell the applicant they're paying for it.
Well, I could try that first, and then they, better than pay it to the town.
Or we're not meeting with them anymore, we, you know, you have to say, we're withdrawing from this until you agree to pay for these consultants.
I'd like to take a vote on this in the next meeting, because I wanna see, I know I want a traffic study, but there may be environmental study or.
I think the environmental impact report, we need a consultant for that, I think the other stuff, we can wait.
What about the traffic study?
Yeah, the traffic study and the environmental impact. I think because from the correspondence, the little correspondence we've gotten, and a lot of them through public meeting requests. Um, you can see the Cape Cod Commission is working with the applicant on environmental issues and traffic issues. And so while those, those decisions are being made over in Barnstable, not here, and I think we need to, we need to consult up so that we can have these discussions with somebody that is impartial and has our interest as their goal, advocating for us.
Hmm.
Joe. Listen, I have no problem with consultants, my problem is, is how do we define the scope of the review?
Don't you think that consultant will help us with that? That's my big thing about traffic.
We have to give them a scope. We have to, we have to give them a scope, we're not, we can't just say, look at this. What do I have in front of me from now? I have a very, very, very obscure, limited thing, I don't have anything.
We have one big question, we have one big question, and that is whether it's advantageous to the town or not to divvy up the traffic study. That's one major question. A consultant could, could look at this stuff already and give, and talk to us about it. The other thing is, should this project be looked at by the MEPA office as a full, expanded environmental impact? There's correspondence that says that, oh, the Cape Cod Commission really isn't having an opinion on that, it's up to the applicant. Well, it's really not up to the applicant, we have a say in that.
I wish you wouldn't throw that stuff out there, because that's all, all.
Opinion?
Opinion and not supported by anything that's in front of this board, so I have no problem with it, and actually, I support the.
What stuff am I throwing at you? Please don't, don't say it.
But you're, you're saying that they're having outside discussions without us, and they're, and, listen, there's nothing in front of me that shows that.
According, according to Evan, I got information from the Board of Select, uh, Board of Selectmen, through Rodney.
Mm-hmm.
I sent it to Evan, he was supposed to forward it to you guys. It says in there, I had a question about the environmental impact report, and it says in there, refer to the development agreement application that's been submitted thus far by Mashpee Commons. If you look in there, it talks about, the applicant doesn't know what level of environmental impact review will be done. I think that we should have a consultant to help us with that.
I understand the environmental, the traffic one I have a problem with.
It's the same thing with the big question that we're having here. We, we don't have consensus, and instead of guessing, I'd like to have a, a traffic consultant to help us with that.
Go ahead Evan.
I would just see if the board were to be interested in, in voting to pursue traffic consultants. I think it would be prudent to define the scope, uh, as a peer review of the traffic study and the scope of that study provided to the commission. And it should be vetted, and recommendations should be made to the board, whether to its adequacy or, or anything, any additional study that may or may not be required.
And possibly at, represent us at negotiations?
And possib-.
Possibly?
And possibly, so I mean, um.
Traffic and environment?
I think to Ja- to Jack's point about, you know, you have a scoping memorandum, and you don't have a traffic study yet. It hasn't been provided to the board, I don't know if it's been provided to the commission. But if you're gonna hire a consultant, it would be my recommendation to have a consultant peer review and vet the analysis provided to the commission.
Mm-hmm, right, they're not gonna, so, these, these consultants aren't gonna do the work themselves. They're not gonna do the study themselves, they're gonna do the peer review and advocacy for us, and answer our questions.
I think that scope is relatively simple, it would be a peer review of whatever is provided in terms of a traffic study to the commission.
I just don't wanna jump too far ahead with that, if that's something they can just look at, peer review, like go over the information that's already presented and see if it's good, bad, ugly, or in between.
I mean, I, I think, I, professionally, I would be interested in, in reading the traffic study that's provided to the commission prior to making any decisions, but that would be my recommendation for the scope. If we're gonna go that route, following, uh, after consuming the, the data and analysis provided in the report that the commons submits to the commission. And we say, you know what, we really do need this peer reviewed, then, then that's the.
And the scope of work too, what they're working on right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion.
I make that motion for a consultant to do that kind of scope of work for the environmental impact report and the, um, traffic study.
So a peer review?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sorry, it wasn't clear about that before, but it's like peer review and technical support for us. And the possibility of us sending them to some meetings to negotiate on our behalf.
I second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, well.
I'm not sure about the negotiating on our behalf thing, but I, I'm absolutely fully support the peer review.
Hold on, go ahead Evan.
Just a question for, for the board, are, um, are you asking staff to pursue procurement prior to being, uh, given from the commission and/or the Mashpee Commons their completed traffic study?
Yeah, yeah, because it's the, it's the scope of work I'm concerned with.
See, okay, okay.
If they're still just gonna, you know, step by step, go over the peer, you know, peer review it and see what it is.
I just wanna be clear so I can do my job adequately.
Same thing with the environmental impact report. It's, they're, they're, they're not, nobody's committing at what level. Let's get somebody that can explain, explain to us what level we need. If the study from two thousand and one is okay, and, and it's peer reviewed as still applicable, great. I doubt that, but anyway, if they say that, fine.
So we want the consultant to.
Start.
Do a, well, to do a peer review of the scope of work, is what we're asking, because we really don't have any other information at this point.
I just wanna make sure I understand the motion correctly, so I can, uh, get to work and then back to the office. Uh, the motion is to procure a consultant to have on retainer to peer review the scope of work for the environmental impact and the traffic-related studies for this project, uh, and advocate on behalf of the board, uh, in, in, in their technical capacity on those related issues.
Correct.
And explain to us things too.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, yes, of course.
I understand, but the advocate on behalf of the board has to be after the board has had a chance to look at what they've peer reviewed.
Agreed, agreed.
I don't want them advocating based on.
Without being talking about it first.
If we say.
They're connected together, I wanna make sure there's a separation.
I, I, I asked the question because I, when we, um, issue.
How about peer review, represent the board at, at the, at the direction?
Go ahead.
Of the direction of the board.
For the, for the level of, I don't know what the cost would be, but we'd probably be putting out an RFQ or request for quote relative, you know, at a specific scope of work. I would prefer to be able to attach the study that we're asking them to peer review as an attachment to the RFQ.
But we don't have a study.
But we don't have it, that's my only, uh, issue for procurement. So I mean, the motion can stand, but it would be to the benefit, I think, of the procurement to have the study for the engineers to review to provide an accurate quotation.
We can vote on it, but then we'll just have to wait till we have the information to give to them to get the, you know, their estimate back to us, right?
I think you can give them all the public documents that have been involved so far.
We don't have the traffic study back yet, do we?
No, it's just the scope.
I know, but all they're gonna do is review the scope, okay, and then it'd be nice if we had the study too.
So, so you're looking for a motion to procure consultants.
I'm not making a motion.
I know, but you're, you're suggesting procure.
My one concern, because I, I understand the motion, my one concern is to make the motion and the, to gain the most benefit from the, you know.
The work.
From the work, would be to have the.
Something to study.
Study for the potential responder to review and.
I would give them the development agreement that has been submitted by the applicant to the Cape Cod Commission thus far, and the related correspondence that we have.
There's a development agreement application.
But we're.
There isn't a development agreement yet.
I, I thought, I said application.
No.
So it's the application for the development agreement by the applicant.
Correct.
Thus far that's been submitted, plus any related correspondence.
To do what?
Review the scope of the work.
So, so normally, right, you would have your report done, and you would give it to your consultant to review, but we don't have that yet. What we have is a development agreement application, and there's some correspondence between the town and, um, the applicant and the Cape Cod Commission. That should be kinda bundled together, you're, you're, you're saying you wanna attach that or reference that in the request for quotes.
Because the scope is to peer review that document. So that's what I'm saying, if we don't have the document.
You could say advise the planning board on this development agreement.
I think what Evan's.
Application.
Yeah, I think what Evan's saying is because they don't know what the document looks like, it's the final document. It's hard for them to give us a quote on a peer review if they don't know the, the size of this document, and I think that's what he's concerned about.
You could do it by an hourly rate.
I, 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 I'm moving into the will of the board here, I just wanna make sure that this is done in an efficient manner and not clunky.
Yeah, I'm not.
There's lump sum bids, but you can get an hourly rate, and you can procure based on an hourly rate.
So we're asking them to review the current, whatever the development agreement application is today, to review it for what?
Traffic and environmental impact.
So, the review of the, of the, the scope of work, they'll come back and say the scope of work is inadequate, or the scope of work is fine.
Again, I understood the motion to be a peer review of the traffic study provided to the commission by Mashpee Commons.
Right, and we don't have a traffic study yet.
Well, that's my point, that.
Right.
We're, we're looking for somebody that can start looking at this development agreement application and related correspondence to tell us if the scope of work that is being referred to between the applicant and the Cape Cod Commission is adequate. To protect the interests and most, and to be most beneficial to the town.
The scope of work as it relates to what, traffic and environmental?
The traffic and the environmental impact report.
Which is, which is what the Cape Cod Commission did with the traffic, the scope of work for the traffic study. Isn't that, wasn't that what the commission responded to? That was their assessment of the.
Completely unsatisfied with their response. They're not here, they're not here, they're, we're finding out this stuff from, from re- public records requests. They're not CCing us, they're not telling, I'm like, oh my god, we need somebody for, 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 to, to be in there protecting the rights of the, the interests of the town.
What was, what, aside from not being notified, what technically about their response did you not approve of?
I have never seen a, a, a project that's defined this size, right, a certain size for an agreement and a bylaw change. But, the impact study's looking at something that's far smaller. Now you say something, let's, oh, it's ninety percent diff- you know, ten percent different, we're not talking about that here. We're talking about the majority of the project is being cut out of the traffic study. And I wanna know if that's a good idea or a bad idea. If you asked me today to vote on it, I would say that's a terrible idea.
But I think.
But I wanna give the applicant the benefit of the doubt, but I wanna have a neutral consultant explain to me why it's okay for these things to be segmented. And, and as you know, segmentation is very, very rarely allowed in land use, modeling, bylaws, you know, activity centers. It's prohibited in most bylaws to segment up a project. Because when, because when you, when you look at them individually, they'll never trigger a mitigation.
But as, I, I understand that, but as Evan said, like everything else, we don't know yet, because on the, the concept that they might do it segment by segment as a whole together before they start.
We do know that.
Yeah.
We do know that, because that's what they're suggesting you do, oh, sorry, that's Evan's.
Go ahead.
That's what they're suggesting to do in the, in the scope. That's exactly what, we do know they're trying to segment it.
John, what do you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, can I just make a suggestion? It's, it sounds like everyone's, it's, everyone's saying the same thing, they're concerned about traffic and the term and the whole thing. Um, my suggestion would be is to authori- because you don't really have a definitive plan for Evan to go off and do what he needs to do in my opinion, at this time. But if you authorize Evan to gather up whatever materials he can get, reach out to Cape Cod Commission, Mashpee Commons so he can, then you can authorize at your next meeting in two weeks, a consultant, but he would have something drafted up of scope of work that he can pull something together over the next couple of weeks. That's just my thought.
I think we should go forward with the vote.
I, I think I understand.
It's very simple, they want a twenty-five-year permit, and they only wanna show us, uh, uh, what's a, a fifth of this project. But they wanted twenty, so they already told us what they wanted. We want a twenty-five-year, uh, permit with, not a special permit, I think it's a build-by-right permit, which definitely no. But that's what they're asking for, so I don't understand what we're saying, we don't know what they want. They gave us numbers, what they wanna build out of that, twenty-five years. So let's look at the numbers they gave us and see if a twenty-five-year agreement would work with this. But if they don't want, if they wanna do some phases, forget about the twenty-five-year agreement, and we look at each phase as a different project. That, that's the way they, they said, I don't understand why they haven't gave us nothing, they told us what they wanted. There's like three main things, they want that, build it right, twenty-five-year permit, and they gave us a number of how much they wanna build. I know we can say, no, you can't build all that, but we already have enough to get higher consultant to look at these traffic studies and everything, we don't have to go by.
There is no traffic study.
To scope of work.
Traffic study, we don't have a traffic study yet, it's a scope of work.
But they, with that piece, that thing they gave us was a traffic study from their forty-B project. And, and they submitted that to the Cape Cod Commission, what was that, this bunch of, right?
That was part of the, that was part of the.
No, it was part of the scope of work.
Oh, okay.
It was not a traffic study.
So Dennis, do you wanna make the motion?
We already made a motion, it's, it's on the board, we just had a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think what we're, a lot of what you're talking about Dennis, is part of the development agreement negotiation process.
That we have not done yet.
That we haven't started yet.
So why are we looking at phase one? Have we haven't even looked at the development agreement?
Yes.
We're not looking at, I don't know if we are looking at phase one. All right, we haven't done any of that.
The Cape Cod Commission and the applicant are already working on the development agreement, we're just not part of those, the decision-making process, that's, okay.
I, um, I just have one more question.
As far as I, I have no idea if they're working on the development agreement or not. I think the, my understanding is the commons is still present, is still providing documentation for the application. I don't think they've started working on a development agreement, if they have, that's news to me.
They're trying to determine if the application is complete, and in, and part of that, in that process, they're, they're framing the scope of work for the environmental impact and the traffic study.
So, but they're not negotiating the development agreement.
We need that.
But they're not, they're not negotiating a development agreement at this point.
The work on it has started.
The, the work has started on the development agreement application.
Negotiation going on about traffic study scope of work and environmental impact report, scope of work.
No, I don't think it was a negotiation.
That's all that correspondence between Stephen Tupper, their traffic engineer, and the applicant.
No, that wasn't a negotiation, that was his.
They asked.
Analysis, let me finish, that was his analysis of their scope of work.
VHB asked for a blessing on the scope of work. Cape Cod Commission, yes they did, and the, the VHB memo from January twenty-twenty, they were asking, is this an appropriate pathway for us to take? The Cape Cod Commission, it looks to me like they've said yes, but they haven't asked us. The Cape Cod Commission, it looks to me like they've said yes, but they haven't asked us. So however, I don't want to get caught in the weeds. We need a try. We need a traffic consultant to help us understand if we should be commenting on this stuff and pushing for the rights of Mashpee now, right now, whatever phase this is in. I don't want to get caught up in that. But I feel for the protection of this town, we should have traffic consultant on retainer and an environmental engineer on retainer to help us through this process. And if we want to send a letter to the Cape Cod Commission demanding that we're part of that conversation, we have the technical support.
Do you have a go ahead, Jack?
I I I just you're making some some assumptions that some sort of negotiations going behind behind us.
Forget the word.
I know. It just.
I retract that word.
You know, I I formally.
This conversation.
Okay, let him finish.
I firmly support a peer review of both the environmental and traffic study to see if the scope of work is prudent for the town of Mashpee. I got no problem with that. But to to have an open-ended check with two consultants on retainer, it makes it complicated for the town. And I think we do the peer review. We'll see what and if we see if we have to modify things or do things, then we make assessments from now. But I think really our 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 what we should be doing right now is doing that peer review. Do the peer review of those, and let's see where that gets us. Not have people on retainer or have this whole big thing. Let's do the peer review, see where that guides us, and then go from there.
All right.
That's what I think we should be doing.
Just to.
Please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the back to my initial question. My only, I think, issue with regard to the procurement is even if we were to pursue a request, an hourly rate, we don't have an understanding of how many hours would be built. That's all. So I mean, if it's a hundred or a hundred and fifty or two hundred bucks an hour, how many total hours of the review? I think if we were to have the completed study, you would be able to give a reasonable estimate as to the number of hours of review. That's my only point.
I think you do that with setting a budget.
Yeah, but.
Right? I think Rodney needs to come back up here. I think what you do is you say that the the budget for this work is X thousand dollars.
That's.
Yeah, the problem with I I the reason I don't like that is because when you tell someone you have a project, you have a budget of two thousand dollars, guess what the bill is? Two thousand dollars. So I'm not really.
Oh, no, but you do an hourly rate up to that.
It's still going to be two thousand dollars.
And you you procure based on that hourly rate.
Why don't we just do get a an RFP or whatever whatever you're going to because I don't know if it's an RFP, but do peer review of both of those proposals as submitted by the applicant. Can we just do that and get a standard point?
Start the scope, the review of the scope.
Review of the scope, exactly. Just to make sure we're going that that our interests are being addressed.
Can we use scope and level?
So do you want to amend your motion?
I didn't make the motion. Me, I made the motion.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, I do.
So you want to amend it to.
I saw that one.
I do.
Okay, so try again.
I think Evan's going to recite it for me.
I believe the amended motion would be to procure a consultant for the purposes of peer reviewing the scope of work of the the scope of tra of the traffic study proposed by Mashpee Commons to the Cape Cod Commission for the development agreement.
And.
And the environmental.
I I missed the last part. You have to move out.
And the environmental.
And the scope of work and level of the environmental impact review report as required by NEPA.
Understood.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Go ahead. We're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
You oppose?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
We deserve a round.
No, we we don't applaud at the planning board meetings. That leads to other issues. Okay, we're going to go a little out of order here. We're going to let Evan present his build-out analysis and implications.
All right, I'm going to do this from the podium. Okay. Again, I'll thank the board for a little bit of patience as I work to produce this for you while I've been home.
So congratulations, Evan, on the birth of your son, August.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
That is great news.
You can clap for that.
That's at the discretion of the chairman.
Don't open up that can of worms.
Poor John's going to have like a.
So in your packets, you've had a couple of things for me. First, notably was a memorandum relative to my build-out analysis and subsequent recommendations relative to the zoning that has been proposed for the Community Activity Center overlay district. And I really wanted to highlight, you know, a couple, there are a couple of key points here. You know, first, I gave an overview and my methodology first with the build-out analysis, and it's pretty simple. I relied solely on the FY twenty-one Mashpee assessors database and queried down that database by the parcel size in each of the R three and the R five zoning districts, omitting any parcels that are essentially protected open space. So that would be any parcels that were under jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, owned by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, any any properties held in trust for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Anything that is not developable was removed from this this analysis. When I boiled it down to parcels that were of subdividable size, meaning they were at least twice the minimum required land area that the zoning bylaw requires, so that would be eighty thousand square feet in the R five and forty thousand square feet in the R three, we were left with a pretty small subset of parcels. You can see them here on the screen. I'm going to minimize it just so you can see the scope of the town, but I want to kind of narrow in on a few parcels. You'll see here on this map, parcels highlighted in purple, in pink, in yellow, in orange. These are broken down by zoning districts, so the the purple is the R five, the yellow, R three, reds or orange C one, the pink is C three. Just for the purposes of this preliminary discussion, I'm going to focus on the purple and the yellow. These represent the subdivided. Go ahead.
Okay, so so the colored parcels, whether they're purple, red, or yellow, those are the ones that are not developed right now and not restricted.
With some caveat, I mean, there are smaller parcels, and I have in the packet also kind of my raw breakout of what the parcels are, their land area. And I have little notes in there. I mean, it's a little rough, but some of these are not vacant parcels. They're like five acre parcels with a house on it.
I see.
So you wouldn't get, you know, if you could get four houses, four building lots, and there's a house on it, you would be a net gain of three.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So the the purpose of pursuing this was to highlight where the town is in terms of build-out. You can see that there's very little left in comparison to or in in consideration of protected open space and developable land area. You can see some of the larger parcels here in the northern part of town are the R five developable parcels. And of between the R three and the R five, there are actually only seven total properties, either singular properties or contiguous parcels, that would be be able to be subdivided and produce at least ten building lots. And some of those are, you know, not necessarily ideal for subdivision. They have access issues like here up on the back of Back Road. There's actually, I think, a trailer park here, so this meets the criteria for subdivision, meaning it is of adequate land area. But it's not necessarily ideal for subdivision because there are a number of units on that lot already generating revenue and have grandfather protected status for each of those dwelling units. So not necessarily of high interest for subdivision under current regulations. There are a few parcels that are like this. You can see this parcel is actually the Mashpee Wampanoag or the Rod and Gun Club, rather, and here is Camp Farley. So these are parcels that have current uses on them, and I don't have a firm history of whether of any conservation restrictions that may exist on them, but they account for a fair amount of the developable land area in the northern part of town. And likewise, on the southern part of town, there's only a few smatterings of subdivitable land areas. Looking at the total acreage for each of the R three and the R five, in a best-case scenario, in terms of adding supply in both zoning districts, again, best-case scenario would be two hundred and ninety-four building lots. And that's just in in consideration of adding supply. And again, I think that number is generally heavily inflated because, again, some of these parcels have houses on them already. They're not necessarily tear-down-and-rebuild situations. They may be camps that are going to be camps in perpetuity forever. They might be the Rod and Gun Club. Some of them have access issues and would require serious easements and whatnot for adequate access to the subdivision itself. So best-case scenario, under current zoning, to provide housing in the town is two hundred and ninety-four building lots. And so when we look at that and we say, okay, in consideration of affordable housing, only seven of those properties trigger would recreate ten building lots. We do have an inclusionary requirement or incentive-based bylaw in the zoning that allows a developer to opt into essentially give one affordable building lot for affordable housing purposes in exchange for an additional building lot. But again, it's an incentive-based structure. They don't have to. So if they opted to, the best-case scenario would be eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen affordable housing units. So one point I really tried to stress in the memorandum I provided to you is that in consideration of the housing crisis on the Cape, which we are all relatively familiar with, if you only address the supply side of this equation, you're only going to further incentivize or or maintain the the trend whereas building lots or existing dwellings convert to seasonal units, or they're constructed and sold at a price point that is unattainable to most folks. So you need to address the demand side, and generally, people contemplate this by developing a variety of housing typologies in more concentrated areas, which is, in Mashpee's case, not providing housing in our existing R three and R five or R five and R three zoning districts, but it's in our our commercial areas, using a more compact form of development, such as the one that is being contemplated and proposed by Mashpee Commons. And I really wanted to stress this point because the opportunity for the town to mitigate or do its part in term in terms of addressing housing insecurity, housing access to housing, access to diversified housing and various income levels and age groups and family types, is to provide a variety of housing typologies in our existing commercial districts. We just don't have a zoning in place to enable that. We just we just don't. And so I really, again, strongly and always have recommended the best pathway forward in regards to housing is to encourage mixed-use development in our commercial districts. I think I will always stand by that recommendation. And the manner with which we get there, I think, is what we're here to discuss tonight and what we're going to be doing by way of the development agreement process if we get to a point of success with this process. So in consideration of those facts and looking at what has been proposed in the Community Activity Center overlay district, I've made a couple of recommendations. Primarily in response to, I think, a lot of what I've heard from the community, a lot of the discussion I think the board has had. So we can try to frame and focus the conversation at the board level moving forward in a manner that's productive and is responsive to community concern and also gets everyone to where we hope we can be in terms of addressing the housing crisis and, you know, protecting what folks in Mashpee are very, very proud of. So in in terms of technical recommendations, they were limited. If a compact, mixed-use, walkable neighborhood is what we are interested in pursuing, then the dimensional criteria proposed in the CAC would achieve that. My primary takeaway from some of our conversations was a concern over the building height, and I made a recommendation with regard to building height. And again, these are recommendations. They are to be discussed and debated. But really, I I recognize that there's a lot of discomfort over the potential for five building a four and a half or five stories in town. But I also recognize from a professional standpoint that there are certain uses, as Dennis had alluded to, like hotels, for example, that may benefit from an additional height allowance. So I suggested making a consideration in the zoning itself to build in a mechanism for specific uses to be of a higher height by a special permit. That was my one recommendation with regard to the technical nature of the zoning bylaw, but my other recommendations were with regard to the inclusionary zoning requirements of the zoning bylaw. As we know, in the CAC, Mashpee Commons has proposed a minimum provision of ten percent affordable housing throughout the build-out of their neighborhoods. And so I want to make sure that we're cognizant of the impact that whatever whatever provision of affordable housing is included here has on the town's subsidized housing inventory. Right now, the town sits around five point two, five point three percent. And again, that's again, the SHI is the number of deed-restricted affordable units at eighty percent or below of the average median income divided by the number of dwelling units in the town. So as we add units to the denominator of that equation, it has impact on the numerator. So that we want to ensure that that ten percent figure, if that's where we land, is is advantageous to the town. The town still wants to achieve its ten percent minimum as required by chapter forty B. And the closer that this collaboration is able to bring us to that ten percent, the more advantageous it would be to the town. So it would be my recommendation that the planning board seek a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Committee in this regard to ensure that the the potential is maximized to make diversified housing types available and attainable to all income levels, age groups, and family types throughout the entirety of the overlay district and not just in segmented areas and singular buildings. I would just add the caveat that I don't think that's the intention, and I think we should encourage a hundred percent affordable units, but it shouldn't account for the totality of the provision of affordable housing in the overlay district itself. And further, I make a final recommendation, really just again to to narrow the focus and and where we refer to and discuss the zoning moving forward. I think the major impact, specifically in terms of of density counts, the number of bedrooms, the number of dwellings, is in how the regulating plan and the layout of the subzones is. I really think that's the point of discussion and negotiation at the board. So I make a recommendation to the board to refocus the zoning discussion, assuming, you know, there's there's things contained in the the text of the bylaw itself that can be discussed and negotiated, but they're not all that substantive. Again, the mechanics are relatively simple of the zoning, and the zoning is designed to achieve a certain build form. So if we can say we are satisfied with that build form, but we are concerned about density and open space, the zoning is not really focused on that conversation. It's going to be in the regulating plan and the subzones. So I I urge the board to focus the conversation there, and the conversation could be, how do we reconfigure this, the layout? How do we achieve protections around Trout Pond and the Quasana River by way of the layout? And then we would ask that if we can come to some consensus with regard to the layout of the subzones and or the regulating plan to redefine the density in the zoning itself according to those changes. And I skipped over my first recommendation, but I want to stress that, you know, there are two legislative pathways, as we've kind of alluded to before, for seeking approval of the development agreement. And any necessary zoning changes that are identified is necessary to make that development agreement a reality. I recommend and that and let me just actually get to what those two options are. We've been pursuing zoning articles. You prove you adopt zoning articles, and I'll and the board of selection ratifies the development agreement. The other pathway is the you've essentially developed the zoning land use regulations that are attached to the development agreement, and the whole agreement goes to town meeting. I thought a lot about this, and, you know, our zoning bylaw already is somewhat difficult to administrate. It's been amended over many, many years, and the amendments that would be required to make the CAC functional would require multiple articles at town meeting, multiple amendments across a variety of our chapters. That would be confusing. I think it would be to the benefit of this process to keep them external of the bylaw and have town meeting vote on the agreement itself for the zoning as an attachment. So I that is a recommendation I make to you all. So I really think the the Cape Cod Commission Development Agreement regulations enable this. I think it's at the discretion of the board to decide the pathway with which you ask town meeting to approve this. And I think it would simplify the discussions moving forward. So in closing, those are those are my three recommendations. I think my primary takeaway and what I'm urging you to consider is that we are in a significant housing crisis. No one denies that. We there is an opportunity here. It's really very limited opportu. The opportunities are limited for additional housing development in town due to the nature of available land area and subdivitable parcels. And we want to incentivize the the construction of units that are not the detached single-family house. That's not going to get us the town anywhere in terms of diversity in the housing stock or make any strides towards addressing that housing crisis. So. So if we are motivated to pursue a mixed-use typology, it has to be in our commercial areas, whether it's along those in Route 28 and 151, or in the center of town around the Rotary. That's the strategy we should undertake, but if we are to pursue that with Mashpee Commons, the discussion isn't necessarily in the text of the zoning bylaw, but in the layout of the subzones themselves, and that's how you would define the density primarily. So with that, I would open to any questions.
Evan, and these R5s, couldn't we change the zone that... I have a friend that has like $80 and 500, and he said, gee, I'd like to put two more houses on that, on that piece of property. He asked if he could do that. I said, I don't know, they would have to change the zone, but...
I think...
We could change that R5 to say you could put, you know, more houses on it.
What I really wanted to stress in my memo, Dennis, to that point, is that if we only deal with the supply side of the equation here, meaning, you know, if we only enable the construction of additional detached single-family houses in the zoning districts on smaller lots, and there are many more, there's no disincentive for those units to stay year-round units.
Right.
And there'll also be a higher cost of construction and land acquisitions. So there's no way that really be... We can guarantee their affordability.
We could have put that in the way, in the zoning article, that these houses, if you have $80 square, these houses have to be, you know, for sale and they can't be rentals.
So I would, you know, addressing the housing crisis is always going to require a variety of strategies, and you've contemplated this before and we've discussed it. It's not something that should be off the table, but what I would say is that the priority strategy shouldn't be additional single-family lots, detached single-family houses, primarily also because we don't have wastewater infrastructure in the ground yet, and we want to be able to manage the impacts related to additional housing development in areas that those impacts can be managed most adequately. Again, it could be a multi-pronged approach, but my priority recommendation would not be to make it easier to build more houses. It would be to build different types of houses in different areas.
Yeah. I like to say, I worked on a few of them. They were like in the city of Boston, like on Eckel Lot, they put five apartments, and they were like 24 feet wide. They were three stories, you know, each apartment was three floors high, and they think they were 20, 30 feet. But on that one lot, they got five apartments, and like one of them, they made affordable. And the other ones were market-priced, but otherwise, we would have put one house on that, that piece of property. It was my friend that was developing these, and the city loved them because they were getting more housing, plus they were always getting affordable.
I think what I would say, Dennis, is that, you know, you can see here what the available land area is, right, for development and/or redevelopment, but we could certainly discuss the potential for maximizing the potential of the remaining subdivivable properties. But again, there are so few. You're not going to generate a lot on what's remaining unless you build significant incentives for redevelopment, which I also kind of contemplated in this memo. There are areas, particularly in the commercial areas, that are ripe for redevelopment and just lacking the incentive for the developer to do it. We just don't have the rules in place to enable the types of construction that would benefit the town in terms of the housing market issues.
Right. Evan, can you speak to the, just briefly, the commercial build-out?
Yeah.
Just, you know, what, because that was a question that was raised a couple of times, is, you know, what's available to be built today based on current zoning? What kind of commercial building would...
Oh, yeah. I really should have touched on this, but that's a good question. So again, we have three commercial zoning districts in town. There's the C1 right here in the center of town that comes a little bit down 28 and somewhat up 151, C2 here, and also down the end of 28. You can see that one developable parcel remaining there, and then C3, which comes down here. This is actually also Bridges, which is a C3 district itself. Outside of property controlled by Mashpee Commons, I believe there are only four vacant commercial parcels for development. You can see the two orange ones here, and actually that one to the south of 151 is almost all wetlands, so you're not going to get anything on that property. And this is a small one here down near, it's like near Bowden Road and Polar Cave, I guess, and then obviously around Mashpee Commons. And you can see this, where the green dot is now, is where Mashpee Commons is currently built out, so it didn't trigger the developable area because it's mostly built out already. But what you see in orange is essentially the CAC as proposed with some outliers, some exemptions to that, and these are all developable today. They're all developable pursuant to the uses and the use table by special permit, generally from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and, you know, in some cases, the Planning Board. So in consideration of Mashpee Commons itself, there are really three development pathways. First is a conventional commercial subdivision, where you can carve up each of this property into 40,000 square feet lots and, you know, put a singular building with its own parking facilities, wastewater facilities on site. You could do commercial centers, like South Cape Village, for example, and the predictions around or estimates with regard to potential commercial space that could be constructed under the commercial centers bylaw is a little bit difficult to predict because the Planning Board, by way of that special permit approval, has the unique discretion to establish its own set of dimensional criteria for each. So the way I defined the commercial square footage potential build-out is really by parcel size or collection of parcel sizes and the 20% maximum lot coverage. So I would stress that the square footages contained in the memo are building footprint, not gross floor area of multi-story buildings. So it could be larger under current zoning if you look at it as a gross floor area of multi-story buildings.
I got you.
But what I really wanted to... Oh, and, excuse me, one more pathway. We could pursue, there could be pursued, mixed-use development in center of town under the OSID bylaw, which operates under a transfer of development rights principle. You've seen an analysis that my predecessor, Tom Fidal, had produced relative to the OSID that applied to Mashpee Commons, whereas essentially, housing units that could be constructed here could be transferred to here with bonuses to essentially restrict this as open space, transfer the amount of units that you could put here, plus incentives to the center of town, and that would generate about 400 units of housing, and the town would also, in exchange, get open space and affordable housing. So those are the three pathways. OSID was put in the books in 1987. And as I've stated before, you know, zoning should take into consideration market conditions. Developers are generally going to pursue the most advantageous development pathway, and I think it's to a benefit here that, you know, this property that we're discussing, really, has remained undeveloped for many, many years. It didn't have to be that way. It could have been developed, and it has development rights. And what could be developed, there's an exhaustive list of uses in the zoning bylaws, Section 174-25, but there are things, you know, like retail stores, grocery stores, clothing stores, gas stations, contractor trades, you name it, it's in there, but there are no housing. And, you know, generally unmitigated traffic impacts by way of the other pathways of development when you consider a conventional subdivision. Not so much with a commercial center because they'd likely trigger a DRI, depending on the parcel size. But either way, the point I wanted to make is that the commercial build-out in the center of town, if we're taking into consideration community character and the housing issue, is not ideal. It's truly not ideal. So, you know, we've discussed this before, and I'll say it again. You know, the zoning bylaw, in today's condition, as it sits today, really is inadequate to address those needs, and I don't think produces a typology, a building typology, whereas community character can really be preserved. So it is, I think, crucial, whether it's through this process or another, that we address those issues. And, you know, I'm happy we're doing that now. But yeah, I think the numbers with regard to commercial build-out are contained in the memorandum, but again, I want to stress that it's building footprint, not gross floor area based on multi-story buildings, and doesn't make any assumptions about what the Planning Board may or may not do with regard to a special permit dimensional criteria contained therein.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So when you were talking about the percent affordable housing, right, the denominator is the year-round housing, right? So it's not all our housing units, it's year-round. What zoning technique can we use to require the units that are built, housing units that are built, are year-round?
I don't have an answer for you tonight. I would want to look into that and provide a definitive response.
That's great. The other thing is, you could do, you could develop the commercial property into housing through a state statute, right? Chapter 40B.
Yes, that's correct.
With 25% affordable.
That's correct.
And you could do it as mixed-use.
That's also correct.
Right. And I think the underlying zoning caps the amount of commercial space. So you can use Chapter 40B to get bonus density on housing units, but not like commercial square footage.
That's all correct, Mary. I think, to your point, though...
No, it's just a question.
Oh, okay, but yes.
And then, I've always wanted to ask this question. I never have. The OSID, right? The units that are transferred in, they can be mixed-use, right?
Absolutely, yes.
And how do you know how much height or how many stories you can have?
I'd have to review the OSID bylaw. It's pretty, it's lengthy, but, you know, based on some of the other bylaws that the Planning Board is the special permit granting authority for, I would say you probably have the sole discretion to determine that, but that's, again, I'm making an assumption, and I will follow up with you with that response.
I think you do. I think, yeah, under the special permit, I think, yeah, if you could follow that up, that's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Can I just say you did a great job on this?
That's a lot of work.
It was very informative. I appreciate it.
Good job, Evan.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So based on your analysis, the residential build-out under current zoning, you get something a little less than 300 housing units. 294-ish?
I'd say you get around 300, you get 300 units...
Yep.
That would only exacerbate the current issue.
Right, because it'd be single-family.
Plus, OSID.
Well, I'm getting to that. So then, if OSID were, someone decided to go that route for some reason, that would produce 400, 400-ish.
According to Mr. Fidal's analysis that I've provided to the board, and I am inclined to think that his analysis is thorough, but I would have to check if it's accurate.
Okay. So both of those, based on current zoning, are well below what Mashpee Commons is suggesting in their development, you know, in their plan, in their 25-year plan. They're somewhere between 1,300 and 1,700.
Yes, they're below.
Okay.
How many, how many housing units are in their Chapter 40B?
I don't know.
In Mashpee Commons?
Yeah.
I want to say there's in the 50s constructed, and maybe it's 35 constructed, 55 permitted. Again, I'd have to clarify that for you.
It's almost 400, I think they're allowed.
Say it again, Mary?
It's almost 400 units they're allowed?
I'd have to confirm. I'd be operating again in assumptions, and I'd prefer to provide definitive answers.
So I echo Jack. This is a great, great piece of work. I would recommend anyone, you're going to, obviously, it's part of the package, it'll be out on the website.
Yeah, we'll put it on the website. I'm happy to answer any questions, available in my office at, you know, all times. I'm back on Tuesday.
This has been, this has been a question from the beginning. What would current zoning allow? This clearly answers that. You know, my two takeaways were, you know, the current zoning clearly is inadequate to address the housing issue, as it's written today. And, you know, not as importantly, but pretty important, the current zoning provides for commercial development, which is not appealing, would not be appealing. It would be, to your point in your memo, it would be Route 28 in Yarmouth-type commercial development.
Well, you know, I think a big reason I became a planner was because I spent a lot of time driving through...
Does it matter?
Yes, it does. I work on Route 28 in Yarmouth.
I don't think, I don't think anybody would want Route 28 in Yarmouth down in the middle of Mashpee.
I'd say we hear it all the time, but it's not just, it's not just Yarmouth.
I understand.
There are so many communities, not just on the Cape, but in Massachusetts and nationwide, that have been subjected, that have subjected themselves to a similar development pattern.
I understand.
And it's essentially singular, singular buildings and singular uses on lots with large setbacks, parking in front of the side, and it's incredibly segmented, generally people find to be unattractive, and it's very dysfunctional, especially from the pedestrian standpoint. It's a place that's designed for cars. And there was a time and a place, whereas that's how it went. But I think we sit here today, and I would say that there is 100% a better way to meet community needs and provide places for people to gather.
Right.
And under status quo development regulations, you are not going to obtain the outcome that I think is generally desirable by most folks, whether you live in Mashpee or somewhere else.
Yeah. Thank you. Well done, all of this while having a new baby.
Number three, that's it.
Good job, buddy.
Nice job, Evan.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I have one topic under Chairman's report, and I'd like to talk about public comment or public discussion, if you would mind.
Ooh, a handout.
Yeah, just, I put some thoughts on paper that I would like to just discuss. One more? Yep. So regarding public comment, and I had a very good conversation with a Mashpee resident. We agreed to disagree on almost everything we talked about, but it was civil and respectful and productive. And one of, and the conversation was around providing opportunity for public comment, which I would, and it's my own opinion, and that's why I'm bringing it to the board for discussion. I always thought it was a little odd that the public could talk at us, and, you know, we didn't have a dialogue. I don't know if that's just been common practice for years. I don't know how that was, came to be, but it's just strange. So, you know, one of the things I'm suggesting here for discussion and agreement is, you know, more of an opportunity for a dialogue rather than a talking at the board. Now, there's got to be, you know, guidelines in place to do that, obviously, and I've suggested some of those here. You know, the, obviously, the comments, questions would be directed to the board, and there would be the opportunity for a discussion back and forth, as opposed to just talking at the board. We write it down and come back with responses if and when that's appropriate. You know, if the comments and questions were related to topics we spoke about at the immediate past meeting or the meeting taking place, that would put some structure around it. So, you know, you could have a productive conversation about things that are topical. You know, number three is be respectful of everyone's time. I personally prefer a time limit only because, you know, we've got other business to do and we've got work to do. Either it's a time limit on per comment, or it's a time limit on total comments, or it's both. You know, try to make the questions and comments, this was a suggestion from the person that I had the conversation with, comments and questions that are unique, and, you know, enough said there. Respectful, thoughtful, courteous, everyone's entitled to their opinion, you're not entitled to your own facts, but everyone's entitled to their own opinion. And, you know, of course, behavior would need to be appropriate. We've had some instances where behavior was not appropriate. This allows for a dialogue and a discussion. We're not all going to agree. There's going to be spirited conversations, but those can be done respectfully and courteously. And, you know, rest assured that if it isn't, my job is to manage the meeting, and if the dialogue does not produce respectful, courteous conversation, you know, I will have, I would take appropriate action to make sure that that does not occur. that that does not occur. Does, you want to talk about it? Is everybody, what do you think?
So what we've done in the past, when there's a topic of discussion, and you're not going to get through the meeting with everybody coming up individually, we've had workshops. You call them a town hall.
Well, I did, yeah, I did talk about a town hall.
So the accessory dwelling unit bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
That was obvious to me, that was the case. We came an hour early, and we had a workshop that was separate from our public hearing on the zoning bylaw, and I think we might have had two. And then we had, I think we had two, and we made changes, and then we had, we had another one, and then we had the special, the public hearing on it. So that worked, that worked well separating out.
Yep.
But I have to say, I've never limited comment to two minutes. Even during very contentious public hearings, and there have been plenty of public hearings in the last three years here, it's, I've always suggested that people limit their comments between three and five minutes, and if they tend to go over, the chair would ask them to wrap it up. There are some cases that there is an entity that would be representing a whole neighborhood, and they were given up to 20 minutes to talk because they had so much information to provide.
Yeah, I think what...
So if I could just...
Please, go ahead.
The other thing is, this is a very unique situation. This is not one store going in. This has subject after subject, a dozen subjects to consider, a dozen impacts, traffic, housing, commercial space, height. Just two minutes? It should, if you're going to do that, it should be two minutes per subject. There's so many different things. I'd like, you know, that town hall kind of workshop thing, because that would give you the time for that.
But otherwise, you have to put limits on it, because it could just go on 20, 48, hour.
That's our job.
Well, you have to get, you have to get everyone's voice. You can't have someone go over two hours, sorry, you can't speak.
You don't want it at a town meeting.
Two minutes.
You know, I mean, this is a big thing. This, you're going to see, we're going to have a public hearing eventually about a grocery store. You're going to see how much comment we're going to have to get through for just that. Multiply that by 10 or 100.
Well, I just want to make sure everyone gets their voice, you know? I'd hate to have people cut out because someone's going on for 20, 25 minutes.
I'm here. We used to stay till 11 o'clock at night when we talked about Mashpee Commons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean...
I like everything you said here, John, but the two minutes is, I think you ought to give them a little more time, like, like at least four minutes per comment, and then you can say, if you keep on repeating yourself in that four minutes, you can, you know...
You did have a lot of that over that time, repeating, and a lot of that, a lot of repeating, yeah.
The two minutes is too short.
Yeah, hey, well, again, I don't think they're set rules, I mean, just something we can discuss.
Well, yeah, I mean, the headline was, be respectful of everyone's time.
I mean, overall, it's basic human decor, but I would hope, but except for a certain amount of time.
And to your point, Mary, for the larger, broader conversations, you know, every once in a while, we have a town hall, and that is strictly dialogue. We're not doing anything else except having a conversation about a specific topic.
The, the other thing is, I don't mind when people repeat comments. I mean, they, there's strategies to do that. You say, oh, that person that spoke up about this, I agree with. You don't, you know, because I like to know in the room how many people feel the same way. To me, that's important.
Yeah, there, there are other ways to find that out than, than five people saying the exact same thing.
No, but I...
That's not a productive use of our time.
Well, I disagree.
But I also think we need to push forward, that people do have the ability...
I wasn't done.
Oh, go ahead.
That people have the...
And I'm going to speak, and I'm going to ask the board members to please not interrupt me while I'm speaking, especially to project proponents. Thanks.
And I would ask that everyone on the board allow the other board members to speak without interrupting, and the people in attendance would allow everyone to speak without interrupting. And as I stated in the, in the, you know, guidelines here, outbursts, clapping, talking over someone, you know, hissing, which was taking place, that's just not, it's not, it's not, it's not going to be allowed. It's not appropriate, it's not courteous, it's disrespectful, and it, you can't have it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that you let me finish my statement before you give guidance to the, the audience?
Yes, I thought you were done.
No, I mean, when they're clapping, or cheering, or hissing, or booing me?
No, I'm going to stop the conversation, and I'm going to stop the behavior.
If you're interrupting me.
And they're interrupting you.
And you...
They're interrupting you.
I disagree with you.
Well, you can disagree, but my job is to run the meeting. They're interrupting you, and I'm going to stop it.
I would appreciate it if you let me finish my sentence when I'm talking.
I am going to stop the conversation if there's clapping and disruption. That's my job.
That's inappropriate, sir.
The behavior is inappropriate, and I will stop the conversation and manage the meeting.
If I'm talking to the applicant, I need to, I need to finish my sentence. You can wait.
Then you need, no.
The world won't end.
No, no. I'm going to manage the meeting, and I'm going to stop the behavior, because it's, it's disrespectful.
You're treating people...
It's disrespectful to everybody here and anybody else that wants to speak.
That's treating people, that's so disrespectful to me when you interrupt me. I would like you to stop doing that.
Mary, I'm not the one interrupting you.
You just did it right now.
It's, it's, the, the people in the audience are clapping and, and whatever it is, and it's not just you. If there's anyone up here speaking, that's interrupting you, and I'm not going to allow that to happen. That's it.
You're interrupting me. I was talking the other night, you interrupted me. I wasn't disturbed by anything else but you. So please, sir, do not interrupt me when I'm speaking.
And I would ask you to do the same, because you do it on a number of occasions, not just to me, but to other members of this board.
He's not wrong, you know? I mean, it happens, we're all getting, you know, heated conversations, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jack.
You set yourself up for that one.
I would suggest, too, and it's been said before, and we should reemphasize it, though, if people do have questions, it is beneficial to us if they submit them in writing beforehand, so it gives us a chance to actually formulate an answer for them and get them some information, so when they do stand up and they ask a question, we have some information to give them. So I would really stress to the, the public that attend, if they do have an opportunity and they know the questions they want to ask, submit them beforehand, so it gives us an opportunity to get ready for them. Just, just saying.
Fair.
I know questions come up when people are talking and say, oh, I didn't think of that, because they just mentioned something, but if they have a question prior to, it's good to get out.
So during public hearings, they have to be acknowledged, those questions have to be acknowledged and addressed.
Correct. I'm talking about public comment, like, just a discussion at the beginning of every meeting.
So you might want to use that format with written questions coming in. There's been some written comments that haven't been, just, I don't know why, and I don't really care why, but going forward, written comments, I think, should be acknowledged in either read or summarized, suggestion based on that.
Are we cool with these guidelines?
Not the timeline.
Because I'd like to, well, I will, I will put in, please be respectful of everyone's time, it would be great if you could limit it to two minutes.
How about four?
I had a professor in college that said, if you can't make a point in two minutes, you don't have a point.
I had a, I had a boss like that.
Probably wouldn't have liked that.
And he was pretty good. I will leave it open-ended to be respectful of everyone's time, but if, if we're...
Sorry, you lost your job.
Cool with this? If we're, if we're cool with this, I'd like to, I'll formalize it, we'll get it on the website, so people understand what the guidelines are, and let's start to have a dialogue.
When are we going to have our first town hall?
That depends on, you know, what the...
Discuss that another night.
Yeah, let's, let's get through our first, let's get through our first public discussion first.
We get the report back from the consultant.
Let's see how that goes. Thank you.
Dennis?
I think go ahead with this, Ed, John.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good start.
I was...
I don't like the two minutes, but...
Overall, basic human decorum needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
So this is the commercial, all the residents can see this, too.
Correct.
You're good.
Can we adjourn?
Dennis?
I don't know.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Second. Thank you.
Hi.